7:30.
Thank you. I'm going to call a regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order on Tuesday, January 25, 2022, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber and via Zoom teleconference. This meeting link can be found on the agenda and on the city's website calendar. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Susan Lovering, and Alderwoman at Lodge Gloria Timmons will lead us in the Pledge to the Flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding, which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. If you are participating via Zoom, which none of the members are this evening, we can skip that. Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Cleat.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Present.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Kamau.
Here.
Alderman Dow.
Present.
Alderman Gobia.
Here.
Alderman Cathy.
Present.
Alderman Tevo.
Here.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Moser.
Here.
We have 15 in attendance.
Thank you also. Joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donches and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. I'd just like to take a second to send my condolences, and I'm sure that of the board, to Donna Graham, who lost her father this past week. Donna's really done a terrific job for us. She's a great person, and, you know, my condolences to her and her family. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So first, I wanted to update you again on the COVID situation. Currently, we have received, there have been, well, there are two basic measurements that are used to determine the amount of transmission within the community. First, the number of new cases that have arisen per 100,000 population.
Mayor, can I introduce you? Gentlemen in the back, you need to keep your masks on or leave the chamber, please?
Sure, you got it.
Thank you. Sorry, Mayor.
So the two measurements, number one, the number of new cases per 100,000 people over the last 14 days. For Nashville, that number is 3237, significantly higher than we met two weeks ago. The number of active cases right now is 1,092, and the positivity rate, that is the number of people who test who come up with the virus, has actually gone down a little bit since the last time we met. It's now 24.8%, but still, that is a very high number. Again, the projections seem to be bearing out. The projections from the University of Washington, where a lot of expertise, the projections come from, said that we would be rising in January and would reach a peak in February. But the good news is, hopefully, they are correct in projecting that the number of cases will rapidly decline sometime in, after February, by springtime. I know that the Board of Health, and I see members are here tonight, have recommended we continue the mask requirement in public places that was adopted for one month. The Board of Health has recommended for one more month. I believe that's necessary, given the public health problems, crisis that we face. Since we, although there's some talk that the Omicron is not as serious, 10 people have died in Nashville since the last time we met, for a total of 130 people. As of yesterday, there were 60 people in the two hospitals with COVID. Still, they're very stressed in terms of their ability to meet the health needs of those with COVID and all of their other patients with the norm, you know, the typical serious health conditions, heart, cancer, strokes, all the other things that hospitals see on a routine basis. I wanted to turn to something else, Madam President. There are two projects that you should, I hope you will drive by and take a look at, that have gotten a good start. The school street housing, 150 units on School Street between School and High, has begun in earnest now. That represents about a $40 million investment of private capital, first time that we've had from the ground-up construction of apartments in the downtown in more than a century. So that is a very significant investment. And the Monahan Manor, the redevelopment of Bronstein, which will transform 48 units of affordable housing into over 200, that has also begun in earnest. I just wanted to stress that on that project, the Housing Authority has worked with the tenants to ensure that they, all tenants who wish to return to that location, they've all been placed elsewhere, but if they wish to return, they will be guaranteed an apartment of equal or better size. And it seemed that the Housing Authority did a very good job of making sure that everybody was taken care of. And so that was an important step in terms of trying to make sure that we treat the people, the tenants, properly, fairly, and in a way that we would hope to be treated ourselves. Finally, I wanted to mention a couple of ceremonies that were annual but very nice. The two Martin Luther King Day celebrations that take place annually, again, occurred this year, but virtually rather than in person. The First Baptist Church, for decades now, has held a Martin Luther King Ceremony on Saturday night of the Martin Luther King Day weekend. That was, and I have been participating for a long time, that went very well, the music, they have a lot of music, it was really good. And I just want to thank the First Baptist Church for doing that every year. And OBU held their annual Martin Luther King Day Celebration on Monday morning, which is what they do annually. Again, they've been doing this for decades. That was virtual as well, a lot of music, some good speakers, a youth speaker, a young man from Nashville South, who is the school board rep. He did a very good job. So I just wanted to thank them and congratulate them on, again, holding those very important ceremonies. And with that, Madam President, I will conclude.
Thank you, Mayor. A response to the remarks of the mayor? Anyone? Alderman Kamau.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Mayor, I just had a quick question. If you could clarify on the COVID numbers. You mentioned that there are 60 people in the two hospitals. Do your numbers break down how many of those people are in there because of COVID versus just with it along with something else? And also, on the positivity rate in the new cases, do we know how many of those people are asymptomatic?
The first question, we get these numbers, you know, we get this information from the hospital, and they, I think they report to us the people who are there with a primary diagnosis of COVID. So that would be 60. Also, in terms of, your second question was the number that are asymptomatic, we do not have that breakdown. But typical people test when they are symptomatic. But I don't have a breakdown as symptomatic versus non-symptomatic.
I understand they're not hospitalized if they're not symptomatic. Anyone else? Say none? Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading minutes of previous meetings, there being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the special organizational and regular Board of Aldermen meetings of December 28, 2021, January 9, and January 11 of 2022. Be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural action and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Donna Graham, Legislative Affairs Manager, regarding communications received from the public.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Next, we have period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. I will let the public know that we do expect to be acting on the mask mandate this evening. And so we will allow public comment on that. What I'd like to ask is that we don't repeat everything the first person, second, third, fourth, fifth person has said. If someone gets up and, you know, 10 people have spoken, and you're just going to get up and repeat the same thing, I would ask that you just come to the microphone and say, I agree with what so-and-so said, I'm for it or against it. I mean, we could be here, you know, four hours taking testimony. So if you don't have to be redundant, please don't. Okay, the first person signed up is Lou Juris. We need your name and address for the record, please. And you have three minutes.
Good evening. Lou Juris, 56 Haynes Street. And the mandate should be extended for at least a month. We talked earlier about the cases in the hospitals, and at the very least, this is going to help protect those who've done quite a good job, a great job for us in the healthcare system here in Nashville for the past two years. This includes the hospitals, long-term care facilities, and nursing facilities. We got staff that, this is like a law, they're working, you know, and they're getting, they're getting sick from it. And even if we can just stop one or two cases, one or two people from going into the hospital over the next month, it's going to give them the relief and the respite that they need to keep moving forward and hopefully not leave the healthcare field. Right now, we've had 10 people pass away the past week. I'm sure by tomorrow, there'll be, or the next day, there'll be a couple more from this. And again, if we can keep stems virus from circulating in the area, whether you're inside, wherever you are inside, and again, save one or two, just a few people from going in, to give them the, to relieve some of the pressure from the system, that's important. It could also help somebody from getting ill as well. Thank you for your time this evening, and I'm glad this is being brought up for consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have Lori Ordolano.
Lori Ordolano, 41 Berkeley Street. Please end this mask mandate on January 31. First of all, I'd like to know, can you provide the legal authority the board is relying upon that permits New Hampshire cities and towns to require face coverings? Does the city of Nashville need to require or mandate face coverings because of grant money you're receiving by the federal government? And given the way these ordinance are written, they're called out as an emergency act, can you identify the emergency you're relying on for these face covering ordinances? And state law, Chapter 31, Section 5, requires that city and towns obtain permission from the courts to spend money in a city emergency, and have we done that? I take objection to the mayor's comments. His information to Alderman Kamau was not correct. The hospitals do not break out incidental cases. They're reporting incidental in COVID admissions, and they are admitted. People go to the hospital to have their gallbladder out, they get there, they get COVID tested, and they're positive. They're admitted, they're counted as COVID, but they're there to have their gallbladder removed. Two weeks ago, I checked on those numbers. There were 30-something cases in the hospital, 12 were incidental. Massachusetts has requested that hospitals break out all incidental cases. We're not doing that in New Hampshire. The doctors who came to the Board of Health meeting last week and spoke to the Board of Health, they were surprise visitors who were given public comment, and the few members of the public who were there were not given public comment. And that is not correct. They were not on the agenda. It was a very disingenuous meeting for those of us in the public that wanted information. Those doctors came with one data point. I had written a letter to the Board of Health and asked them to gather data and show us the whole picture. And in come two doctors with one day's data point. Southern had 46 patients, a record high on Wednesday. Sunday, it was 14. They changed dramatically. And we need running data. I'd like to know, in the first ordinance where you came up with all the statistics, that our local hospitals are reporting 60% to 80% of the patients are unvaccinated and ill. If you're following the data now, more of these patients going into the hospital are vaccinated. And in fact, the Board of Health doctors who came, the two hospital doctors, said that when Director Bagley asked them if more of the patients in the hospital are unvaccinated, she said, no, it's 50/50. They both said that.
30 seconds.
And they both said, the booster makes no difference. So I do not think we need this legislation. The mayor said 14-day average data he gave you, that's bad data. Get the seven-day data. That's what's posted on the New Hampshire dashboard. Look at the fall. It has come down dramatically. And this is yesterday's. Today, it's down another, I just checked it, it just clicked in. It's down another 5%. Please, go another week, lift the masks, peel them off everyone, and be done. Wore this mask forever. And it's time to take it off. Thank you.
The next person I have is Laura Cahoon.
Laura Cahoon, 30 Greenwood Drive. I'm requesting that the board vote against the extended mask ordinance for the city of Nashville. As the real science is now telling citizens masks are useless, however, the city of Nashville, Board of Health still wants the residents to wear masks. All that the city of Nashville is doing is hurting both the residents and the small businesses within Nashville. It is unbelievable that within the city of Nashville, you can go to a bar, restaurant, or casino and not wear a mask. However, if you go to any other store, you need a mask. Can anybody tell me the science that states that the virus does not enter the bars, restaurants, or casinos? Because I've been researching, and I cannot find anything on the science of this. If the Board of Aldermen will have, get the Nashville residents have had enough, and they now want to live their lives, I'm asking the Board of Aldermen not to extend the mask ordinance within the city of Nashville. Thank you.
Next, Matthew Guthro.
Matthew Guthro, 104 Fon Lane. Good evening, Mayor, Madam President, Alderman. My comments this evening are concerning the extension of the citywide mask mandate on your agenda this evening. If you recall, I brought up at a previous meeting my disappointment on how this mandate was passed in the first place, without any public comment, and at both the Board of Health meeting or with this body. Emergency powers were used to get this legislation passed with a first and second reading within minutes of each other, without any public input, and it's almost unheard of. The comments that you did hear came from members of the Board of Health who opined about how necessary this was. One member of that body said that a child died of COVID in New Hampshire that week, and boldly stated that one child was too many. Later that evening, Dr. Chan, our own state epidemiologist on WMER, stated that the rumor of the child's death here in New Hampshire due to COVID was untrue. I think the sample size that you're looking for occurs right here in Nashville, in our public schools, where everyone has been masked since the school year started in August of 2021. During that time, the level of public spread, which never dipped below substantial, according to Mrs. Bagley's dashboards. With all of that masking, we have seen a decrease in cases in our public schools? No. In fact, we had to close our schools for two days because of staff and teachers were out sick with COVID-19. This was during the time in which you implemented a citywide mask mandate. Fortunately, this variant is not as deadly as the one we first experienced two years ago, and people can recover from its mild symptoms. The science tells us that cloth masks do not work against the Omicron variant. The CDC director, who is from New England, describes cloth masks as facial decorations, and compares their effectiveness as keeping out mosquitoes with a chain-linked fence. So why are we going out of our way to mandate that everyone wears them? In conclusion, why are decisions made with false or misleading information and no public input? If this were a true public health emergency, why isn't Bobby Bagley and her team handing out N95 masks to protect the public health like they do with needles and syringes to recreational drug users in the city? Stop the insanity. Vote no on extending the mask mandate on this agenda this evening, and trust in the faith that together, we can get through this without any unnecessary, and get through this tumultuous time without unnecessary ambiguous mandates. Thank you.
Sonia Prince.
Hi, Sonia Prince, 49, Tufts Drive. This is about the spread. Over 200 new cases in our schools. There were 400 the week before, 400 the week before that. It's ridiculous. For a perspective example, the province of New Brunswick, Canada, is in a two-week shutdown because of 400 new cases, and they have 770,000 people. So yes, we need the mask order. And yes, even cloth masks is better than nothing. What's better is if we don't gather indoors in groups. That would be the best thing, especially if you can't open windows. But really, cloth mask is better than nothing. You might gain a foot, but whatever. Yes, the N95s are much better, especially for teachers who are stuck in these classrooms, or if we're hurting 100 to 300 kids in a gym or a library at school, which my son has experienced, and I've kept him home after that. So really, I do hope you vote for the mask order. It's a norberian, it's protecting our community and our health workers. Thank you.
Beth Skare.
Hi, Beth Skare, 111 East Hobart Street. Yeah, I'm talking here about the mask ordinance. I think it should be not extended because nearby towns don't have mask mandates. It's very easy for people to drive out of town and shop somewhere else. And because of that, our small businesses are suffering. And I think it's especially cruel to force parents to put masks on their two-year-olds, three-year-olds. I think it's completely inhumane. And I wanted to thank Alderman Kamau for surveying public input on Facebook. I think there's way too little inquiry into what the public thinks in Nashville, and way too much insular discussion. Thanks. That's it.
Thank you. Julie Smith.
Thank you. Julie Smith, 18, Bangor Street. I want you to end this egregious government overreach now. I agree with everything that Laurie, Laura, Matthew, and Beth have said, and I have nothing more to add. Thank you.
Thank you. Allison Dyer.
Hi, Allison Dyer, 9 Squire Drive. I also, my comment is just in regards to the mask mandate or the mask ordinance for Nashville. As I expressed to you all in my emails, you know, at various points, Nashville is not an island. Our hospitals are regional, they feed all the other surrounding towns. And, you know, we're two years into this. We do all have an idea of how to protect ourselves and others, and we are capable to make those decisions for ourselves. And I would just like to see us go forward and try to quell and calm a little bit more of this, you know, citywide divisiveness that we have going on, and end the mask ordinance, and let's all move forward to better times. Thank you.
Justin Rosenberg.
Hi, Justin Rosenberg, 30, Cluster Kessler Farm Drive. It's said that insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results, and that's a perfect word to describe what the Board of Health has overcome with, insanity. This board is completely divorced from reality. The real virus in this community, and it has been for a long time, is the delusion that masks and the recommendations from this deluded group can prevent you from getting an aerosolized virus. This board still says to this day that cloth masks provide protection, which even the most fervent mask proponents says is useless, like Dr. Lianna Wen likened them recently to mere facial decorations. The board says it wants to combat misinformation. I'm here to tell the public and the Alderman, misinformation is coming from inside the house. Here is a life cycle of a Board of Health recommendation. They put forth a policy proposal, it's passed by the Alderman, it doesn't work at all, they blame everyone but themselves, and then it's back to square one. The Board of Health is the epitome of a self-fulfilling prophecy. They justify their continued relevance with policies that don't work, so we just run the same playbook over and over again as if it'll magically work despite all evidence of the past two years showing the opposite. The Board of Health speaks towards those in the public by differing and often superior evidence with a level of scorn and disdain. It begs the question how the Alderman keeps listening to them. It's like an abusive relationship. Their mask mandates don't work, and their response is, you made me mask you. The Aldermen here tonight have not totally given over to this farcical show, then you will vote no on the mandate extension. If you do, I will continue to not follow it in any capacity and encourage as many people as possible to do so as well. If all the board is capable of doing is parroting CDC and Big Pharma talking points without even a shred of doubt or questioning, then what use do we have for you? The fact that simple questions like Laurie had cannot be answered definitively at these meetings in 2022 is absurd. That is all I have to say. This mandate should be ended. The Board of Health's rant is over. We're done.
Joanne St. John.
Good evening. I just would like to say that I definitely would like our Board of Aldermen to vote to maintain the mask mandate here in Nashville. I don't want to repeat what others have said. I'm hoping that going forward throughout the night, though, it's not one repetitive insult against our boards and science after another. Thank you very much for your time. I hope that you all vote sensibly this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Parks.
Hey, Chris Parks, 24 Bolick Street here in Nashville. Just wanted to comment this evening and tell you a story. One of the greatest jobs ever had in the Marine Corps was training and teaching newly commissioned second lieutenants. And I remember a time where we were doing some urban warfare training, and I sat there and watched a lieutenant send one of his squads into a building, and as they were coming up to the building, they all got, you know, killed and simulated from one window. So his next thing was to send another squad at the same window. Guess what happened? They all got killed again. So his third option, he's just going to send another squad. They all get killed again. The lesson with this was that he just kept reinforcing failure. And that's exactly what this mask mandate is. You know, and let's talk about masks. Since COVID started over two years ago, we've been told, hey, no one needs to wear a mask. And this was from Fauci back in the day. No one needs to wear a mask. Oh, you only need one if you're a healthcare worker. You only need one if you're sick. Then we need to wear two masks. Then Fauci wants us to wear three, you know. But as everyone has stated tonight, it's been proven that they don't work. The cloth masks don't do anything to stop the spread. And it's a great opportunity for people like me to sit here and look at people like the Board of Health and say, I told you so. But, you know, maybe we could also, well, I'll leave that for another day. But I'd like to say congratulations to the returning Aldermen and Alderwomen. You've legislated yourself into insignificance. As I walk around and shop in Nashville, never wearing a mask, I can tell you that no one has asked me to leave, and store owners really aren't complying. Congratulations to the new Aldermen. Perhaps you'll not follow the same process as your predecessors, and think for yourselves, and disregard the Board of Health, who have now not only made the recommendation to continue wearing masks, which don't work, but remember about a year ago when they also recommended curfew, you know, because COVID only comes out at 9:30 at night. Hopefully, you'll continue to disregard the mayor, you know. I mean, he is the guy who brought us question, too. We saw that, what a roaring success that was. As someone who's led over 200 Marines in combat situations across multiple continents and multiple countries, been shot at in multiple countries, I can tell you that I don't let fear shape my decision-making. I would hope the rest of our so-called leaders would understand what that title means and do the same.
30 seconds.
All set, Mr. Parks? Thank you. Representative Linda Harriet Gaffray.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, President Wilshire, and Mayor Donches, and to the Board of Aldermen. I am truly appreciative of our Health Department and the work that they've done.
Linda, we need your name and address for the record, please.
I'm sorry. Linda Gaffray, 28, Marion Lane, Nashville, New Hampshire.
Thank you.
Thank you. So as I said, I appreciate the work that the Board of Health has done, and as well as the Board of Aldermen. And I am definitely in for the mask continuing at least another month or so, until hopefully things get much better than where we are today. And I do believe in the work that the Board of Health is doing to keep us abreast of what's happening here in Nashville. Thank you.
Thank you. Alicia Houston.
Alderman and Mayor, I appreciate the time. Alicia Houston, 139 West Wood Drive. I just would like to echo the sentiments of Ms. Ordolano, Ms. Calhoun, Mr. Guthrow, Ms. Scaire, Ms. Smith, Mr. Rosenberg, Mr. Parks, Ms. Dyer, and I also would like to remind everyone that New York actually, New York City, just lifted their mask mandate. So if they're able to do that, there's no reason why we can't do that in a smaller city like Nashua. Thank you.
Thank you. Brady.
Hello. My name's Brady Owens. I'm from, I live at 16 Danbury Road in Nashua, New Hampshire. I just wanted to also support that I am not for extending this mask mandate. I am thankful for the Board of Aldermen and President Willschar for allowing public content this time. It was very upsetting. Last, you know, about a month ago, we were here, and we weren't allowed to talk. So, you know, I'm not going to take a long time, but I, you know, what Laurie article for Ordolano said, and Kokohan, and Chris Parks, and everybody else, I support everything they said. And I just want to remind the Board of Aldermen, you know, one of y'all's jobs is to represent us. We're here talking. We're telling you, we don't want this. I was very disappointed when, at the last meeting, Alderman Dowd, who represents me, you know, started the meeting by saying, "Hey, I've heard from a lot of businesses. I've heard from a lot of people. Nobody wants this," but yet you vote for it anyway. You know, we've heard the Board of Health. You can't go anywhere without hearing that stuff. We're done with it. So, you know, we're here telling you, the people, we don't want this. And as many people have already said, we're not paying attention to any, we haven't worn a mask yet, not going to. And there's a lot of businesses around town that aren't wanting to enforce it. I can't blame them. You know, this needs to be over. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to give public comment? Come to the podium, give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. Thank you. You need to leave your mask on, sir.
All right. My name is Don Whalen, 12 Lincoln Ave., Nashua. I'm against the mask mandate in Nashua. Mask mandates have always been more about showing compliance than keeping people safe, and the CDC's latest embarrassing disclosure further proves it. As outlined in a recent New York Times article, the CDC concedes that cloth masks do not protect against the virus, especially Omicron, as effectively as other masks. And this again proves that the CDC is continuing to change course on mask messaging as well as other COVID-related items. What's next for Nashua? N95 or KN95 mask mandates? Don't laugh, this is actually happening in California. Just this week, the Los Angeles Times noted, "A big push for Californians to switch to N95 or KN95 masks as an updated county health order that went into effect this past Monday requires employers to provide not just masks for their employees, but a well-fitting medical-grade mask, surgical mask, or higher-level respirator such as N95 filtering facepiece respirator or KN95. What's happening in California is real and not a TV show or movie." In other news, just yesterday, the New York Supreme Court struck down the governor's mask mandate for schools and public areas, ruling that the governor overstepped her authority. It's hard to believe that when it comes to masks, Nashua, New Hampshire is more restrictive than the state of New York. As everyone probably knows, the Omicron variant is extremely contagious. As early as December 20, 2021, the CDC warned anyone with the Omicron infection can spread the virus to others, even if they are vaccinated or don't have symptoms, which means vaccinated Nashua citizens can not only catch the new variant but spread it, too. Unless you never leave your house, you will probably either get COVID now or later. Most experts predict that COVID-19 will become an endemic disease after the pandemic phase, once enough people have developed immunity to COVID-19, either through vaccination or infection. In other words, COVID-19 is expected to become a recurring disease like the flu. Masks have been largely political theater from the start, back when Dr. Fauci and team promised we didn't need masks, and then flip-flopped and promised we did need masks. If you want to wear a mask, wear one. If you don't want to wear a mask, don't wear one. If businesses require a mask for entry into their establishment, then that is their choice, and people can choose to wear a mask or to go elsewhere. Masks should not be mandated. It should be an individual choice.
Looks like the end of our public comment period. Mr. Sewell.
Al Sewell, 5 Lincoln Avenue, Nashua. I am gratefully impressed and blessed to see that our elected officials have offered public comment at this point in time. I'm actually appalled and embarrassed, and I think if you take a look at, in all honesty, the mistakes that we've made in the recent past of what you did not allow in recent history for public comment, I think you would take a look at that and honestly maybe perhaps admit that that's why you were elected in the first place. You're elected by the residents and citizens of Nashua to represent our interests. Clearly, overwhelmingly, if you look at the Facebook poll or talk to people in the city that we live in and that we all love, you would know and realize that people can make smart decisions, and they typically do. If you follow the science and follow the numbers, the numbers are going downward and trending in the right direction. People can make the right decisions, and it's their, and my belief, it's their personal decision of whether or not they want to wear a mask or not. We should not mandate it, absolutely should not mandate it. Thank you for your time.
Barbara Velandry.
Good evening. Barbara Velandry, 41, I'm sorry, 127 Field Road. I am in favor of extending the mask mandate. As people are talking about the scientific statistics and what they know from scientists, but not quoting the scientists, that doesn't match anything I've heard, and I have watched a lot of news and a lot of medical people talking about this. It seems to me that the masks, in fact, do work, and an extension for another month should reduce our rates and get us into a summer where, in fact, people can get out without a mask. So I urge you to vote in favor of extending the mandate. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes, one more, okay.
I'm sorry to drag out your time. Tim Senate, 62 Underhill Street here in Nashua. I'd be remiss just to come, if I didn't come before you and speak to those of us, you're hearing a lot of opposition tonight. You're hearing a lot of stories of people who will leave the city and do their business elsewhere. I'd just like to remind you that there are those of us, whether they're here to speak or not, that will continue to do business in the city regardless of whether or not this mandate is extended or not. I am one of those people. My family is as well. I live in this city, and I care for this city. I care for the businesses here. Whether or not a mask mandate exists, I will continue to do my business here. I think there are many that are like me. I'd also just like to speak to comments that I heard earlier regarding the effect on children. I care for my seven-year-old son very deeply. As you know, since the beginning of the school year, masks have been mandated in our public schools. I've not heard one peep out of my son about wearing a mask during the day. Yes, it's natural that we've had spread in the schools. They can't stay on all day. Children can't eat wearing a mask. There are other things they can't do wearing masks. They can't drink water wearing a mask. Those are opportunities for spread, but to date, I have not heard my son make a peep out of it, other than when I asked him if it bothers him to wear a mask. He told me, "Dad, it's really not that big a deal." I'm going to continue wearing mine, and I'm going to continue doing business here in Nashua. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Tyler Ramrath.
My name is Tyler Ramrath of 34 Tufts Drive. A component of any government mandate is enforcement. If you vote for a continued mandate, what you are saying to the citizenry is that you think it is immoral for you all to dispatch armed men and women from the government to use threat of force or force to enforce a mandate which only protects those who choose not to be vaccinated or choose not to mitigate in other ways. I am threatened by government agents over the wear of such a garment. I very well may defend myself with a means lesser than or equal to that which is being used to threaten me. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see anyone else. We are going to move on from public comment. Communications requiring Final Approval.
Communication has been received from Stephen A. Bolton Corporation Council regarding confidential attorney-client communication.
As soon as you're seated, Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam President, I would like to make a motion to authorize Mayor Donches to execute the settlement agreement for the purposes therein contained by roll call.
Discussion on the motion. Do we, do you want a roll call? We don't need a roll call, but do you want a roll call?
Seeing that everybody's here, I don't think we need a, so I'll yield my request of a roll call, Madam.
Okay, thank you very much. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries.
Communication has been received from Laurie Willscher, President of the Board of Aldermen, regarding amendment to Aldermanic Committees 2022, 2023.
Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Madam President. I would move to approve the amended Aldermanic Committees of 2022, 2023.
Thank you, and I'd like to explain what happened here. When I was putting the committee assignments together, I didn't realize that three people, three at-large members had to be on the Finance Committee and three ward members. I didn't set it up that way. It was my error, and so I spoke with the individuals that were affected by it and all agreeably to move this forward. So it was my error, and I appreciate those of you who were willing to accept the changes. So I appreciate it. Discussion. Alderman Cathy.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I would just like to echo your sentiments that I was one of the people that was asked to step down from the Finance Committee, and it was completely voluntary, and I was happy to do so, so that we were complying with the affected ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Lopez.
I just want to observe for the public and for any, I mean, I'm sure all of the new aldermen know, we can go to all those committees, and some of us do. So as an Alderman, you definitely have a seat at the table. The chairs are typically very respectful of people because the committee's function is to approve things that ultimately, or recommend things in most cases that the board itself will vote on. Finance Committee is a little bit different in that it has a little more of a workload, but you can always attend, and you can always pitch in if you need to.
Alderman Kelly.
I actually just wanted to add on to that, that you can attend, but as a noncommittee member, you can't make motions or changes. You can only make random recommendations or comments.
Most committees will allow a non-voting member to ask a voting member to make a motion for them, and that's acceptable as well. Alderman Clay.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, as a person who attends almost every meeting, I just, I truly find it just helps me get all those, because as they say, the work happens in committee, and it makes me a little bit more knowledgeable when we sit through the horseshoes. But not everybody has that time.
Alderman Kamal.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't necessarily have a problem with the revised committee assignments. I just wanted to say, the other day, Alderman Jettie and I attended a kickoff meeting for one of our liaison committees, and I was disappointed to hear that in previous years they had very little involvement from their Aldermanic Liaisons. And just looking at the new assignments, it seems like there are a couple of aldermen who have very heavy workloads, including their liaison committees, and I just hope that they're able to perform the work that's required of all of those committees, and if it's too much of a workload, that maybe we can revise some of that down the road.
Yes, and the reason we appoint a liaison and an alternate, if the liaison can't make that meeting, then they would reach out to the alternate and say, "Hey, I can't make tomorrow's meeting. Are you available?" We do the best we can to represent all the, you know, committees that we are assigned to, but it's not 100% possible to always be there. I mean, a lot of us work daytime, and it's not always possible, but we do our best. So, thank you for that. Further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Petitions.
None.
Nominations, appointments, and elections.
To the Honorable Board of Aldermen, I have this day appointed Paula Flame of 28 Lutheran Drive, Nashua, to the Auditorium Commission for a term to expire December 31, 2024; Shantin Bist of 4 Carville Hill Road, Nashua, to the Cultural Connections Committee for a term to expire February 28, 2023; Maureen Bork of 37 Jennifer Drive, Nashua; Jedediah Crook of 52 King Street, Nashua; Sherry Dutzy of 18 Swart Terrace, Nashua; Gloria McCarthy, 65 Musket Drive, Nashua; and Brandon Perotti of 14 Lockmere Lane, Nashua, to the Conservation Commission, all for terms to expire December 31, 2024; Cheryl Lindner of Nashua, New Hampshire, to the Conway Ice Arena Commission for an indefinite term; Richard Gillespie, 15 Spencer Drive, Nashua; and Stacy Wignalt of 6th New Hampshire Avenue, Nashua, to the Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee for terms to expire December 31, 2024, and January 31, 2024, respectively; and John Griffin of Tinsborough, Massachusetts, to the Board of Public Works Retirement System Board of Trustees, to the Business and Industrial Development Authority, and to the Tax Increment Financing Advisory Board for indefinite terms, and respectfully request that these appointments be confirmed.
Madam Clerk, could you clarify on, under the Conservation Commission, Shanta Bist? I think you said Cultural Connections.
I did.
You did. Okay, so our agenda is incorrect? Our agenda says Conservation Commission.
And the mayor's appointment says it is to the Cultural Connections?
Okay, we'll make that, we'll note that on our agendas. Alderman Lopez.
I don't know who has to answer this question, maybe the mayor or even the president. I was just curious what the Auditorium Committee is, and if it's the auditorium upstairs, is that the one that's in charge of fixing that one mic?
I believe the Auditorium Commission is, well, Mayor, you can speak.
The help to organize the KEEP auditorium and schedule it and the like.
Okay, well, thanks for clarification.
It's headed by, again, Mr. Dennis Schneider.
Okay, reports of committees, there being no objection, I will declare the report of the December 21, 2021 Planning and Economic Development Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the January 5, 2022 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of a Budget Review Committee meeting held last night regarding Resolution 22001. Alderman Dowd.
Yes, last night, the Budget Review Committee met, and we had a discussion, questions answered on Resolution R22001 on a contract negotiation with the Nashua Board of Ed, Supervisors, Administrators, and it was approved five to two in favor of recommending final approval.
Thank you. Confirmation of Board of Aldermen and Mayor's appointments.
There is none.
Unfinished business resolutions.
Second reading of Resolution R22001, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the Nashua Board of Education and the Nashua Association of School Administrators and Supervisors, American Federation of School Administrators, AFL-CIO, from July 1 of 2021 through June 30 of 2024 and related transfers.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage to R22001 and like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, today I sent out clarification on the questions that came up yesterday, and I get the answers from Mr. Dan Donovan, the CFO of the School District, and I hope that answered all the questions that were before us.
Alderman Cathy.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Did we get clarification from last meeting on when the contract date clock started ticking?
Yes, I had a discussion with legal counsel.
Yes, I had a discussion with legal counsel today, and the data starts on the first reading, so I believe we had... 30 days will be up on February 11th, if I have the date correct.
Thank you.
Alderman Kamau.
Given that the 30 days starts on the date of the first reading, it would seem that we do have another Board of Aldermen full meeting before that deadline expires. So if we were to wait until then, it gives the public an opportunity to review this as well as the committee members last night. I know they got their questions answered, but we haven't allowed the public time to review that, and there may be additional questions that we don't know of yet. So I think it'd be prudent, given that we won't be in violation of that 30 days, to wait until the next meeting for final passage.
Further discussion? Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I was going to make a motion to definitely postpone this vote until the February 8th meeting, just to give a chance... It's a big contract. Give the chance to the board to... We just looked at it last night for the first time. We did get answers, and since we are inside the window, I would like to make that motion to see if we could definitely postpone that vote until...
Indefinite postponement means we're killing it.
I'm sorry, definite postponement. Pardon me.
Or tabling? You can definitely postpone it to a time certain. Is that true?
Yes.
Thank you. Till February?
February 8th. I want to make sure that we're inside the window, so this doesn't expire. Thank you.
That's the motion. Alderman Dowd.
Again, just to reiterate that we're not in a position where we can renegotiate the contract. It's either a vote up or a vote down based on the cost of the contract. I'm not sure what questions could be answered by the public that would affect this.
So this is only debatable to the time of the consideration. So Alderman Kamau.
Yes, just... Thank you, Madam President. Just to agree with Alderman Sullivan, I think that we might not know what questions we want to ask yet, because a lot of people haven't had time to review it. Again, some people saw this for the first time last night. So I think that the definite postponement to the February 8th meeting is prudent and will give us time to make sure that it's properly reviewed and vetted before we vote to pass it.
Anyone else? Motion before us is to postpone this definitely to February 8th.
Madam President, roll call.
Alderman Clemmons requests a roll call. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
No.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
No.
Alderman Moran.
No.
Alderman Lopez.
No.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderwoman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Kamau.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Cathy.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
No.
Alderwoman Timmons.
No.
Alderman Mosher.
No.
You have five yays and ten nays.
That motion fails. Motion before us is for final passage, Resolution 22001. Seeing no further discussion, motion is for final passage. Would the clerk please call the... You don't have to call the roll.
I was gonna ask for a roll.
It's a nice thing to call the roll. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Unfinished business ordinances.
There is none.
New business resolutions?
First reading of Resolution R. 22004, relative to the acceptance of $40,000 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Safety State Homeland Security Grant Program into police grant activity 2021 bomb detection technology equipment.
So at this time, I go around and usually ask if there's anyone else that wants to sponsor the legislation. This is your chance to, you know, co-sponsor if you'd like to do so. So I'm gonna ask for co-sponsors. Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Kamau, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Govea, Alderman Cathy, Alderman Tebow, Alderwoman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll send that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution R. 22005, authorizing the filing of applications and execution of grant agreements with the U.S. Department of Transportation for grants under the Urban Mass Transportation Act of 1964, as amended, for fiscal years 2023 and 2024.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Timmons, and myself. Tough getting used to all these new names. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of Resolution R. 22006, relative to the acceptance of an additional $377,873.50 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into transit grant activity, Federal Transit Authority, FTA, operating grant.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Govea, Alderman Tebow, Alderwoman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll sign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading, Resolution R. 22007, relative to the acceptance of $98,250 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Health and Human Services into police grant activity fiscal year 2022 COVID-19 vaccination aid grant.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Cle, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderwoman Kelly, Alderman Kamau, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Govea, Alderman Tebow, Alderman Timmons, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the soon-to-be very busy Human Affairs Committee. New business ordinances.
First reading of ordinance O. 22003, relative to requiring face coverings through February 28th, 2022.
Alderman O'Brien.
I don't have any.
Did you want to suspend the rule for a second reading?
Oh, thank you for reminding me. Madam President, I would like to be recognized for a second reading of O. 22-003.
Motion is to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading. Alderman Lopez.
How does this work with sponsorships?
Oh, you can sponsor. Do you want to be able to sponsor? I'll take co-sponsors before that.
Yeah, I'm just always confused, like we go down earlier.
Additional sponsors: Alderwoman Cle, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Timmons, and myself. The motion, Alderman... Alderman O'Brien. Suspend the rule to allow for a second reading. I can't remember the old name. Never mind the new names. The motion is to suspend the rules to allow for a second reading. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Madam Clerk?
Second reading of ordinance O. 22003, relative to requiring face coverings through February 28th, 2022.
Alderman O'Brien, final passage?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion of final passage of O. 22-003.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Clemmons.
Roll call, please.
Motion is for roll call. Okay. Discussion? I'm gonna start over here. Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. I was fortunate enough to join the public health meeting as an alternate, because Alderwoman Timmons could not attend, and we heard some data from the doctors at the local hospitals and the medical staff, and this seems like a very pragmatic ordinance to temporarily extend this for 30 days. I will have to acknowledge everyone that spoke on both sides. I think it is very important that the public have public input, whether you agree with something we do or not. I think public dissent is American, and we should be doing that as much as we can. We may not always agree, but we need to listen to each other. Mask and COVID, for me, is very personal. I lost my father to COVID. He is 52 years old, so I take any precautions as we can as serious as possible. With that being said, I also understand that the medical community is not always right. I am part of the medical community. I'm a healthcare worker. Sometimes we have a tendency to have a white coat mentality, and we tell you what is right. We don't take into your opinion. Fortunately, science is pretty black and white. Yes, the efficiency of cloth mask is not as effective as the N95, but we're trying to do something to relieve the burden of our healthcare workers in the hospitals. I can say that it seems that the endemic is in sight, and that we all want to get back to living as normally as possible without masks. And I believe that I... And I hope this is the first and only vote that I would make to extend this mandate, given the data that I've been seeing, that I can read and understand myself without having the board help explain it to me, that we are going to have a sharp decrease very soon. But I do think the current decreases that we are seeing are in part due to these masks that we're wearing today. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Lopez.
Yeah, I've been volunteering with the United Way to help the hospital workers that need to be tested in COVID because they're spread very thin. They're already being supplemented by FEMA doctors. They're already being supplemented by National Guards people. They're struggling too, and I empathize with the healthcare workers that have to make decisions about what risks to put their families in while continuing to practice their careers and work in their practice. I hear and see many healthcare practitioners considering different areas of work, opportunities to be educators, opportunities to work in healthcare fields that are a little bit more voluntary, particularly hospital workers. They're being pushed very hard. As difficult as COVID-19 has been on all of us, it has been very difficult for hospital workers who didn't get a summer off, didn't get that return to the way things were enjoyed for when our community transmission was low. They've been working throughout the whole year, wearing masks 24... or like their whole shift, sometimes 24/7, depending on what roles there are. I know multiple residential care facilities have created an isolation model where staff have been recruited to stay on-site for two weeks or one week at a time to minimize the number of people coming in and out of those sites, and that comes with some financial opportunity, but also some serious personal sacrifice. I think the medical community has been doing as much as it possibly could to offset the impact of the COVID-19 epidemic. I think as politicians, we probably could have done more, many, many opportunities, and many, many times, if we'd known, if we'd had better, perfect information, better insight. What we do have, we use. Scientific data is helpful for predicting outcomes, and, you know, theoretical models, we rely on those for everything from testing the weather to organizing mass transportation. Those models say... have said that we were gonna see the surge that we saw in January due to holiday in-home interactions, and we did. The onset of Omicron did start to coincide with that, but there was a prediction that it could get much worse much faster if we didn't intervene. So we did. We did implement the mask mandate. In the original legislation, the... For this mask... For the mask made that we're discussing tonight, the Board of Health did reserve the right to revisit it in February because the model showed that there was likely the possibility that the surge wouldn't be low enough that it couldn't just return. So as usual, we have the choice between us to stop or keep going. Do we stop what's working and potentially let a resurgence happen, let our hospitals face even more overwhelming, oversubscribing, I think was the term that was using, was used in the Board of Health meeting, or do we just assume that everything will go away like a miracle in April? I don't see miracles. I think we need to do everything we can to protect the people that we love. I think we need to do everything we can to protect people we don't know, and if that means wearing a mask, I think many people will choose to do that because of the leadership the city shows. There will always be people who will not follow laws. We don't make laws for people who are going to break them unless we're specifically trying to target them with penalties. Most laws are designed for people who are going to follow them out of a sense of responsibility to their city and a sense of responsibility to their community. So while we did hear some people tonight who are unwilling to follow rules unless they agree with them, we also heard from a lot of citizens who are willing to do what's necessary to help other people and who will abide with uncomfortable situations if necessary.
Alderman Jettie.
Madam President, would it be in order... I noticed that the chairman of the Board of Health is here. Would it be in order to allow him to explain to us why the Board of Health is recommending that we extend the mask mandate?
Dr. Storres, are you willing to give a few minutes, since you are here?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing us to be here. One of the things I want to get across, and I think is important, is the fact that this is something unique that's never happened to us at this magnitude. Yes, the Spanish flu killed a lot of different people, but times were different, techniques, education was different. We're writing this book as we're going, and I apologize if there's a lot of confusion, because there's a lot of confusion for us too as well, as we listen to information coming down. And I apologize. There's probably been a lot of politics involved in it as well, and we in science don't like that at all. So I can tell you that the masks do work. I wore one for 40 years, 10 to 12 hours a day, and I never had a patient say, "Hey, doc, take it off. It doesn't work." It just... It does work. Yes, the Omicron and the Delta particles are small and can get through, but one of the things that all of us wearing the mask help protect is it knocks down most of them, and that helps us. I'd also bring your attention, without naming names, the last time we were here, one of the Board of Aldermen came down with COVID, and I think that was the only person, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe truly that it was because we were all wearing masks. Okay? Yes. How did we get it? How did he get it? I don't know. I don't go home with him. I don't watch him. He's not on surveillance. We know that this last variant, and there's other variants out there, but luckily it looks like that they're dying out. This last variant had the bad news, extremely infectious, the good news, not as real as Delta. And vaccines that we gave out, well, I've known many people who have been vaccinated who have gotten Omicron. Okay, so that happens. I know one person in particular personally who's gotten COVID three times. Personally, I think he should be a study model in a case why that's true, but each one of those cases was verified by a nucleic acid test, which is very, very sensitive to what was going on. So we know it's there. We predicted the surge. We were getting tired. We got a little bit lax. We went out and partied at Christmas and Thanksgiving, and we told you there would be a surge, and then even a spike on top of the surge. And then we're thinking that by mid-January, based on the models from the University of Washington, also from John Hawkins, thought that this would kind of crest in our area by the second weekend of January. Now they're predicting it's more like the first weekend of February. And yes, if you go on the CDC website and you look at the graph, you'll see we're coming down. But when you look at those graphs, you have to remember, it's also like looking at a stock graph. Is it going down? Should I buy? Oops. Is it going back up? Is it flattening out? We don't know. I mean, that's just... We just don't know. We're hoping it's going in the right direction. The bad news is it's not going in the right direction. Fasten up there. We feel comfortable saying, "Take the mask off. We can go ahead. There'll still be some spread, but it'll be reasonable." One of the things we feel the masks have done significantly is helped the hospitals, and we know that that's a problem. We have National Guards in our hospitals here in Nashua filling in for people. It's been a tough row, as Mr. Lopez has talked about. Yes, there's financial gain, but there's a huge personal price you have to pay when you work those hours under that kind of stress, et cetera, et cetera. I'm not a pediatrician, so I can't answer any of your questions regarding the schools. School mandates for masks come from the school department. They don't really come from... I have some of the staff here who'd be more than happy to share the data if you're data-driven. If you're tired and you don't want to hear it, that's okay. I understand. I look at the data every day, and I've been... I look at the data every day, and I've been, like I said last time, studying virology infectious disease for the last two years, just to try to keep up and watch the changes. One week we hear one thing, the next week we hear something totally different or a variation on that. That's the book being written and the sound you hear is the person erasing what was just said the last week before. So again, it's changing. Any questions you might have? Thank you for consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Lopez.
Again, if you want to hear from the staff, please.
Alderman Cleed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this question may be for Corporate Counsel. I've gotten a lot of phone calls relative to the previous mandate, and this is basically just an extension of it. Defining businesses and so on, and did that also include churches and private schools within the city limits, obviously?
We in the legal department have discussed this and we believe it would not include churches, but would include private, private schools.
Thank you.
Alderman Kamel?
Thank you, Madam President. In preparation for the meeting tonight, I have been giving a lot of thought to the term representative government and how to interpret that. I know that it's not feasible or practical to entertain the idea of sending every ordinance and resolution to the public for a vote every time that we discuss something, so they depend on us to do that for them. And there's basically two ways that I've come up with it, you can look at that. The first is that they ask somebody to go and make their decisions for them. And the second possible interpretation is that they ask somebody to go deliver their voice. And so which one are we? I think that it's probably both, the right answer, like most things, is it's in the middle, it's both, it depends on the situation. If there's a topic that we're debating that we feel like the public is 50/50 on, I think they expect us, because they voted for us, to vote our conscience and our ideals and our values. However, if there's a topic that's overwhelmingly lopsided, I think that we're doing a disservice to the public when we ignore their very loud voice. And so, you know, I've done a little bit of, you know, looking at some of these numbers, and I know that we all get the same emails, so we've all been reading them over the last week or two. And over 90% of the email correspondence that we've gotten is for us to vote no on this. I personally have received 100% of the correspondence to my personal email that was asking us to vote no on this. I kept track of the speakers tonight, it was about 70% against. And I did, I did do a very, very informal poll on the Nashua Scoop, which is the largest social media site in Nashua. They have membership from every ward of every political belief. They are roughly 50% larger than the next largest group with 15,000 members. And over 70% of the respondents to that poll are opposed to this mandate with hundreds of responses in the last 12 hours. So I think that it's our responsibility as public servants to serve the public. And, you know, I'm not going to debate whether masks work or the science or anything like that because I'm wildly unqualified to do so. But we've been asked to represent the public and it's very clear what the public wants. I don't think there's any debate about what the majority of the public wants us to do and it's our responsibility to do that. Thank you.
Alderman Kelly?
Thank you. I actually wanted to start out, the gentleman from the Board of Health really did an incredible job. And you started off by saying, I'm sorry. And I just wanted to say, thank you. Not just for serving, but for, you know, for really, you know, putting out why you put this ordinance in front of us. It's going to come as no surprise to anybody that I support this. I support our health workers, I support our Board of Health and the job that they are asked to do. They are experts in their field and they are here like any other department head, whether it's the Chief of Police, the Chief of Fire. If they're telling us that this is the appropriate thing to do, then I 100% am going to be behind that. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, I'm just going to make a couple of points. One is, I don't think anybody likes wearing masks. You know, I think we took a vote, nobody likes wearing masks. So that's a given. I know I don't like wearing masks. However, a couple of points. One, we had a big scare, we had a family gathering and one of my 12-year-old daughters, granddaughters came down with COVID. It put the whole family in lockdown. Fortunately, she had been fully vaccinated and it was a mild case. And no one else came down with it, the family, they were all tested. The big concern was one of my daughters has a three-year-old and a one-year-old that were exposed. That really concerned the heck out of me because, you know, they're susceptible and for them to get sick and go in the hospital and God knows what could happen, that scared the heck out of me. So, and, and I've always said that if we're not going to support our Board of Health, why do we have them? They're making recommendations to extend. I wish we could extend it for only two weeks and see what happens, but they're asking for a month. I would hope at that point in time, the trend's coming down. The reason New York's coming off the mandate is because their trend is down. They've turned the corner, we haven't. And the other thing is recently I've had the opportunity to talk to several physicians, most of them at Dartmouth-itchcock. They all say, please keep the masks for now. When we're at a point where we see the numbers coming down, then we can terminate it. And I wish we didn't call it a mandate. There are no police going around trying to arrest people for not wearing a mask. The people that are, that are talking against masks, they're not going to wear them anyway, you know? And that's up to them, they won't wear them. The people that are currently wearing masks, even with or without a mandate, are going to keep wearing masks. So it's, it's just more of a, the Board of Aldermen supporting the Board of Health and making a stand that says, we're concerned about COVID, we're concerned about our hospitals being loaded and overworked and, and so I will be supporting this.
Alderman Gueia?
Thank you, Madam President. It's been very clear to me, the Ward one has spoken loud and clear against the proposed ordinance for various reasons, whether it be over call, text, or in-person at the grocery store, I've talked about this. And I think the big thing that I was hearing from a lot of the constituents was there's no enforcement. And what, what is the point of an ordinance without enforcement? It sounds almost useless to me. I think it's been, as it's been said, people who want to wear a mask are going to wear one with or without this mandate. People who do want to wear one are going to wear it with or without this mandate. For those reasons, I will be against the ordinance type. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman Thibault?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to first off say, are we really masking two-year-olds? I hope we're not masking two-year-olds. But, so I'm going to vote for this, for this extension of the mask mandate. I don't like masks and to be honest and pardon my, pardon my language, they suck. I hate them. I hate coaching basketball in them, I hate coaching baseball in them. They're awful. But my vote is not out there to control people's health or, or their political agenda. It's, it's a compassionate vote based on the advice of the Board of Health that has doctors that we trust. I, you know, when I see a medical professional, even though I don't agree with them, and I don't because they call me obese, but I have to trust that what they're telling me is, is accurate and they're trying to help me. And if, if, you know, like Alderman Dowd said, what are we having for if we're not going to, you know, take their advice? You know, we've heard some, a couple of Aldermen say about their ward. Well, my ward, I'm getting 99% to my personal email, maybe 95% saying that they actually want the mask extension. And, you know, we support the people of Nashua, but there's 90,000 people in Nashua. It's, there's not 300 people on Facebook or, you know, 50 emails coming to us. It's 90,000. How many 80-year-olds are on Facebook? And how many of them do we have in the city? They're not voting, they're not voting anywhere. We got to protect them as well. They're, they're people. And, you know, there's probably a lot of 17-year-olds that aren't on the scoop or these other Facebook pages taking informal polls. We have to protect everyone and we have to be here for everyone, not just people voting on these polls. And, you know, I thank you to Ward Eight, their emails have been extremely respectful, even the few that have said that they do not want an extension have been extremely respectful. And I thank that because some of the ones coming to us generally have not been as, as nice. You know, if we, if we do not extend this mask mandate, it doesn't impact the schools. That's a completely different unit. The Board of Education has to follow that, so we won't be changing that. City Hall's not going to be changing. A lot of businesses will keep their employees masked up. If, if they have to be masked for eight hours a day, I don't know why going to Shaw's for an hour and a half is such a deal for us to put on a mask, I really don't. You know, again, I'm not having anybody tell me politically how to vote. I'm voting my conscience based on what my ward wants and what I believe they want and what I believe the Board of Health is telling us. And again, I'm not going to debate the science of it because you can go down and pretty much find anything on the internet that you want. The numbers did go down in schools this week a little bit and I'm hoping that that means there's going to be a change soon that we see these going down and we can actually get rid of the masks hopefully, hopefully at the end of the four weeks. I also, you know, agree with Alderman Dowd about, I wish we could address this in the next meeting as well, if numbers go down, maybe we could get rid of it in two weeks. But I'm going to be for it, so thank you very much.
Alderman Timmons?
Thank you, President O'Shea. I'm also going to support the mask mandate. It's no surprise to anybody that I would not do this. I have children that works in Elliott and one working in Southern Regional, and they wear masks all day long. They see people dying all day long. They say masks work. I believe it work. In the last couple of weeks, I've been taking care of a sick grandchild that had COVID. By the way, I'm not, I'm COVID-free because I'm in a gin study. I have two boosters already. And, and the gin study, if anybody knows gin, is Johnson &amp; Johnson. I've been in that study for the last two years. And in the last two years, one of the things they say in the study, one, I can get vaccinations before most people. I got the second booster already. Who in this room got the second booster already? And during, during my study, they say you need to keep on wearing a mask, it's important. So I will be supporting the mask mandate because I do believe they do. And I go to Mass General, so that's a Massachusetts, and anybody want to follow up on that? That's why I would support this.
Alderman Cathy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. To me, the primary issue is, does COVID, and more specifically the Omicron variant, warrant a mask mandate? If it does, I'm going to need some people to show their numbers, show their work because the Omicron variant is 91% less likely to kill you compared to Delta. That's from Kaiser Permanente. A board member and the former FDA director recently said that we need to end mask mandates. As we know, we heard before, New York is ending their mask mandates, England ended their mask mandates, the CDC came out and said natural immunity meets the vast man, the vax mandate against Delta. And the CDC came out with its own study that said there's only a 1.8% change in case rates of people who wear a mask versus people who do not wear a mask. That means out of 90,000 people who live in Nashua, we're trying to protect 1,100 people, not from dying, not from not going to the hospital, just from catching the case alone, maybe. No other public policy would dictate a mandate over an entire populace over such a small rate of change. It doesn't make any sense. We've already heard that the masks don't work, the, the microns of the virus get through. The Board of Health put in a mask mandate in May of 20, or May of 2020 or June of 2020, I forget the exact date, I apologize. And we had it for a year, yet cases still surged in the winter. And then this year, had a mask mandate, cases still surged. That's two bites of the apple for a mask mandate and it didn't work. Because it doesn't work, mask mandates historically across the world, in multiple cities in the U.S., Europe, wherever you check, once a mask mandate is in place, the cases still surge regardless of a mask mandate because it's not about the mask, it's about what the virus does. It's a virus. It's going to do what viruses do. It has a, an infection rate of seven to 10 people. If you get Omicron, you're going to infect likely seven to 10 people around you. That's like a measles rate. So whether you're vaxxed, whether you have a mask, you're going to get Omicron. The mask mandate's not the thing, that's not the thing that's going to, going to stop it. It's a seasonal thing now, we've seen it twice, two years, it's going to go up, it's going to come down. So masking is not the one-size-fits-all approach that needs to be used here, much like a doctor would not prescribe the same medicine to every patient or a fitness instructor would not prescribe the same routines to, to anyone who's using their health services. It's all about the individual, it's all about what they need. And we are trying to, one-size-fits-all this and make a mask mandate, a mask mandate for an entire city that is, it's unwarranted by the data and I don't think that it is right or correct, and especially it's unfair to businesses who have to force it upon either their employees or customers who walk in the door. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam President. We heard a lot tonight. There's a lot of information out there. I'm going to rely on my eyes and my ears. My eyes tell me that since we instituted the mask mandate in late December, cases shot through the roof. And now they're coming back down regardless of the mask mandate. My ears tell me the city doesn't want this. That's all I need to hear. I think the policy that we set tonight dictates the direction of this city. I think we have to move away from a culture of mandate and move to a culture of responsibility where we take care of each other. If you are worried about a bad outcome from COVID, we now have effective vaccines, we have therapeutics, we have two years going on three years of information. With all due respect to our healthcare workers, to everybody that's on the front lines of this, let's think about everybody that's been affected by this. There's been millions of people that have been cast into poverty because of this pandemic. There are people, countless people in this city that have lost their jobs because our economy stopped. Let's all go back to March, April, and May of 2020. This economy stopped and people lost their jobs. People are tired, they've been vaccinated, they've done what they've been told. And COVID doesn't care. It goes up, it goes down. It goes up, it goes down. I'm going to be voting against extending this tonight and I think we just have to move to a culture of responsibility. Thank you.
Alderman Cleed?
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I have another question, and again, this is probably to Corporate Counsel. The next time that the Board of Health, I believe, comes together would be on 2/9, that's after our February 8th. If they decided at that time that the numbers were coming down and that we could lift this mandate, do we all have to come together or do we have to wait till the next meeting? Or is it something that the mayor can cancel? No, if we have to, we have to come together as the Board of Aldermen and vote on that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you, that answers it. And I just want to make a side comment. I, I too like surveys and, and I listen to my constituents and the truth is, the majority of my constituents have said they were for it. I can't say that it's 99 or 95%, but I would definitely say a strong majority has said that they, that they were for it. One thing I do find out, especially on social media, is that people have a tendency to speak out when they don't like something or they're upset by something. And those that are for something such as this mandate feel bullied and they're afraid to, to do it. At the beginning of this, this pandemic, I think the people that didn't want to be masked and didn't want to be vaccinated, they felt bullied because they would get bullied in grocery stores and so on, put on a mask, put on a mask. I think that the tables have turned and those that are for masks are feeling bullied. I had a number of people that contacted me and very specifically said, please don't use my name, but I am for it. I've had a few other people that said that I could use their name or forward their emails. The truth was, I just got tired of everybody being bombarded with, with emails and didn't forward all these emails to, to all of us, but, but they are, they really do. I think it's a mix, I think the city is split. And I think we literally I think the mix, I think the city is split, and I think if we literally walked around and knocked on every door, we would find that we have a 50-50 within the city. I'm not saying 95, 10, I think really a 50-50. And as such, I think we have a Board of Health. If we don't listen to them, why have them? So, thank you. I will be voting for it.
Alderman Lopez?
I just had a question for Attorney Bolton. A comment was made that, or a question was made, is are we receiving grants that are requiring us to put this mandate into effect? I was not aware of a grant being able to compel Alderman to vote a certain way. Is there anything that was being alluded to that you're aware of that would compel members of this board to vote?
There is nothing. There is nothing. The motivation for this is not because we're compelled by any federal grant. It's never been brought up by anyone other than those opposed to this. There are a couple of other questions that were asked that I can provide responses to. Someone said it was telling that no one could provide a response, but the fact is, I can fully respond. One of the questions was, by what state statute do we have the authorization for the Board of Alderman to enact something like this? The answer is RSA 4717, Roman numeral 15, which authorizes city councils, which in Nashua's case is the Board of Aldermen, to enact ordinances which they deem to be for the well-being of the city. And we tested that last year when we had an ordinance requiring face covering. We went to court and the New Hampshire Superior Court upheld this board's decision to enact such an ordinance and cited that provision of state law. The other statute that was raised by one of the speakers is RSA 31:5. Now, Chapter 31 is the powers of towns, and it's specifically not applicable to cities and other municipalities who can appropriate funds through a Board of Aldermen City Council or Town Council. It only applies to towns that appropriate funds by way of a town meeting. 31:5 speaks to such a town petitioning the Superior Court to enable it to hold a special town meeting to enable a supplemental appropriation. Those of you who have been on this board for any length of time knows that routinely, when necessary, the board has the authority to have meetings where supplemental appropriations are made. That's not what this ordinance is. There's no appropriation in the ordinance at all. So, for both of those reasons, RSA 31:5 doesn't apply at all. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez?
I just had a follow-up question to. A culture of responsibility is referenced earlier. The earlier mask mandate required businesses, well, it stipulated that businesses were required to have face masks on all customers, clients, patrons, whatever. The new mandate that we recently enforced, the emergency one, it requires businesses to post a sign, but it requires the individuals to be wearing masks. Am I accurate in identifying the distinction?
There is a distinction. I don't know that you're quoting precisely the language of the prior ordinance as compared to the one before you today, but there is a distinction, much as you have outlined.
Thank you.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Thank you. I just wanted to respond to a few things that have been said. One of the things that has been asserted is that we have to listen to our citizens, and I agree with that. I 100% agree with that. However, we also have the responsibility to protect those who don't have a voice or can't have a voice. My two-year-old son, he goes, he is unable to be vaccinated. He is not here at the Board of Aldermen telling us how he feels about this, and you'd prefer he wouldn't because he would be destroying the room. But he doesn't have a voice in this, and he cannot protect himself right now. And those are the people, him, there's lots of other people that we are supporting through this. Someone said in public comment, they almost mocked the idea that one child death is too many. One child death is too many, and so is one grandmother, or one father, or one friend. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Kamel?
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to add, my oldest daughter is currently a nurse in a long-term care facility right here in Nashua, so she's also on the front lines of this. She opposes the mandate herself. Both of my children have had COVID, so I certainly understand the sensitivities to it. And you know, my doctors also told me that I should lose weight, and I still get to decide whether I want to eat that steak or not. So, I'm choosing whether or not to take that or not. When I get on my motorcycle, I know the right thing to do is put my helmet on. Sometimes I do, sometimes I don't. Apologize to my daughter if she's listening, but that's what we have the right to do. We get to choose for ourselves. We should be able to choose for ourselves what to do. And as far as listening to the public, I just feel that if members of this body go ahead and vote their conscience against the will of the people, that's a disservice to the public and it goes against what they've attempted to do for them. Thank you.
Alderman Cathy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I have a clarification for Corporation Counsel. Earlier, when it was asked the definition of business and if it included churches, you were affirmative or negative on that?
I said it is the opinion of the legal department that board business does not include church.
Does not include church. Okay, thank you.
Follow-up?
Not necessarily. I'd like to motion for an amendment.
Okay.
Between 10 and 11, I'd like to motion to amend Ordinance 022003 to include a provision that states that Chapter 1, Section 12 of the National Revised Ordinance regarding the penalties for violation do not apply.
Discussion on the amendment. Alderman Clemmons?
Can the good Alderman or Corporation Counsel explain what that amendment does?
Attorney Bolton?
The cited section is in your code, your big black book, if you will, which basically says that the penalty for violation of any ordinance where no other penalty is specified is a maximum fine of $1,000. So, the amendment would basically eliminate that from having any applicability to the ordinance under consideration.
Further discussion on the amendment?
Can I request a roll call?
You can request a roll call. So, you've heard the motion to amend? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
No.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Cleese?
No.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
No.
Alderman Jettie?
No.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
No.
Alderman Kamel?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
No.
Alderman Govea?
Yes.
Alderman Cathy?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
No.
Alderwoman Timmons?
No.
Alderman Mulcher?
No.
You have six yeas and nine nays.
That motion fails. Alderman Tebow?
Yeah, I have a couple of points. One clarification, just to make sure. I said 95% of the emails I was getting from my ward, not 95% of my ward. I don't want my ward eight freaking out. I'm getting more, like I said, 95% of my emails and probably most of the people I talked to have said they are for the extension. So, I don't know if it's just the part of the city. Is it the specific people I'm talking to? I'm trying to talk to anybody. It doesn't matter political party, doesn't really matter. I'd like to talk to everybody in my ward if I could. I get, you know, almost 10,000 people or over 10,000 people. You can't get to everybody, but that's what I'm kind of getting. And I think that's the only, I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Alderman Lopez?
It's worth noting, some people may not have noticed it because it's very subtle, but a large number of the emails that we received very early in this year were actually a form bot. All of the emails were identical. People's names were inserted into it in caps sometimes and sometimes multiple times. And additionally, I do look at the emails that come through specifically to see who's weighing in from Ward 4 that I might not know or may not have reached out to me before. None of the ones that I received that were forwarded to the Board at Large were from Ward 4. The majority of them were not from Nashua.
Alderman Tebow?
Sorry, I remember what I was going to say. So, I did, one of the Ward 8 people that I did talk to wanted me to mention this. I'm just going to throw it out there. You know, the athletic director is listening. If we could have, you know, I agree that kids playing sports inside, basketball, if they could take down their mask to play because they're running back and forth, back and forth, and I think it's taking a lot of them, you know, air out of their lungs, and I wish at least that we could do. I know we can't debate on it, but I would like to just throw that out there because I think that's a concern. It's not an outdoor sport when you can kind of get the air. So, thank you.
Alderman Kamel?
It may shock him as much as it shocks me, but I agree with Alderman Tebow. I just watched my son wrestle in a mask, and I don't know how they do it. As far as the Facebook comments that I made earlier, I was trying to do some due diligence in reaching out to the public. I've listened to many meetings going back months regarding a lot of topics, and it seems like there's always been mention of sentiment in Facebook, one group or the other, polls, public opinion surveys. I would find it interesting if this was the topic that we were supposed to discount, the opinion of people in social media where we give weight to that voice on other topics. Like I said earlier, I'm not going to rehash everything that I said because we'll all be here till midnight, but we shouldn't be debating the science, whether masks work, whether they don't. That's really outside of our purview. The only thing that I keep coming back to is whether we should be mandating them. You know, you can believe that masks work. You can want to wear a mask. You can want everyone else to wear a mask and still be against a mandate. And that's more or less where I fall. Like I said, my daughter's in the healthcare field. We wear them when we have to, and then we don't wear them when we don't have to. And it should be everyone's individual choice to do that on their own without being told that they've had that voice taken away from them. Thank you.
Alderman Timmons?
Yes, thank you, President O'Shaw. Is it possible to pause the question? Because it's just going around and around. Pause the question.
To pause the question?
Yes.
The motion, are you making a motion to move the question?
Yes, I'd like to make that motion.
The motion is to move the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion carries. Motion before us is for final passage of Ordinance 22002. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
No.
Alderman Cleese?
No.
Alderman Moran?
I'm, excuse me. I hate to- I'm sorry.
Excuse me. Can we please not talk unless we're recognized? Thank you.
Madam President, I'm sorry. I meant to say yes. I was looking down at my sheet. I had written a question to myself, so I meant to say yes. Excuse me.
Alderman Cleese votes yes. Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
No.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Kamel?
No.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Govea?
No.
Alderman Cathy?
No.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Mulcher?
Yes.
You have 10 yeas and 5 nays.
That motion carries. Ordinance 22003 is duly adopted. Period for general public comment. One person signed up in the chamber, Lori Ordolano.
Just a couple of things. Thank you for your thoughtful discussion tonight on the mask mandate. You know, I certainly was a proponent of lifting it, and it doesn't really bother me because I know that our surrounding communities are available to go to to do your business, and I choose to do that, and then I don't have to use the mask. I have been a mask wearer very avidly and a big supporter of it, but I changed my views about, you know, six weeks ago, and I don't use it anymore. And because I did research on my own and I really feel that it's not the right thing. But I appreciate the thoughtful discussion. I would like to address Alderman Moran. When you talk about the responsibilities we carry because of our hospitals, I think it's unfair to put that on Nashua people. These hospitals are supported by all these other communities. It's a regional hospital. I'm not responsible for what goes on in the hospital, and I can't do anything about it. We as citizens don't get any data on the hospitals. Nothing comes to us with any consistency at all. Apparently, it goes to the city, but they don't put it out to us. All these surrounding towns don't have ordinances, and they put their people there. So, I don't understand why I'm responsible for the Nashua hospitals, or I have to feel badly because I'm not doing enough. And when you leave restaurants, bars, casinos, and clubs open, and those where contact tracing showed when we did that, that there was an issue, then what's the point? And I don't think kids doing sports should be in masks at all. I think it's more harmful to their health. This is a business owner, Buckley. We've got Surf and MPs on the top, mask required. Three miles away, we've got the two other restaurants in Hollis and in Merrimack. Come in without it. Is that a business owner that doesn't care and isn't responsible to his duties to protect everyone in the hospitals? Should this business owner be doing business here to do that? That's what you put the business owners in. Now, there's a few stores I've gone into Nashua, and I do mean very few, and they actually let me not wear a mask. I went into a pet store, and I literally was putting my mask on. The lady said, you're the only one in here. You don't have to put it on. I don't feel like I'm breaking any big rules, and I was literally the only one in there. I went to another business, small one. The owner doesn't wear a mask at all. He said, you have to wear a mask. I don't wear a mask.
30 seconds.
I did it that way. Our data is coming down, and the mayor is not giving us the kind of information we deserve. You canceled in the last five-minute meetings on masks. You canceled public input three times. You want to know, two Board of Health meetings canceled and one Board of Aldermen meeting canceled on masks. You want to know why people send emails that maybe are not so nice? Because you cancel us out. I'm okay with this mandate.
Time.
I'm not going to fight it. I have other places to go. Thank you.
Come forward.
Hi, my name is Sarah Gombins. I'm at 1 Gettysburg Drive in Ms. Cleese's ward, I believe, right? I just want to start by saying that I have a whole bunch of neighbors and we were not of the like mind. But I understand that these wards are huge, and they're encompassing a lot of people, and I get that. My thoughts are a little scattered. I sat here and listened to the whole meeting with an open mind, tried to be as open as I could about it. I am a mother of two, one in the Nashua school system. I just, tonight, went to pick her up, and there's, sorry, I'm having difficulty regulating my breath with this and being anxious, but besides the point, right? So, I pick her up, and there's dividers on the cafeteria tables. I had no idea. I emailed my principal prior, and they said that it was something that had been done last year, carried over into this year, but there was no, there was no notification that that was being done. I get precautions need to be taken, but where's the communication? On that vein of thought, I want to thank this Alderman. I am so sorry that I do not know your name. I only know a few, a handful, as I've been journeying my path of getting to know how the city politics works better. That's basically my goal of attending all of these meetings, not all of yours, but the meetings that I have been attending. And I just wanted to say thank you for that opportunity to shed voice on it because quite honestly, as I've attended meetings, I've seen more outrage about public- because quite honestly, as I've attended meetings, I've seen more outrage about public comment being taken out than compliments or instances of public comment being given or an opportunity for that to be given. I wonder like, is there a better, more constructive way to get the input of the public so that we can have these silent majorities that everybody is discussing to be able to input in a way that they feel less bullied or, sorry for my, I'm just trying to quit. But I think that everybody should have a voice. And you're right, everybody should have a voice. So let's find ways to do that. Is that not our job here in this committee as a whole? But so moving on, so I wanted to say thank you for collecting any data. And I hope that even a couple hundred voices means something versus thousands. Because I do know that some of the groups that that poll was posted in had 15,000 members. So you can't tell me that was all one way or the other. But only 300 decided to participate.
30 seconds.
Blew my mind. If no things will change, why are we mandating? Heard a lot of talk about a lot of stuff. If you don't want to debate the efficacy because you can't find anything on the internet, how are people getting information to, for, against, or whatever to back up a mandate? Makes no sense. I heard way too many cases of vaccinated individuals passing on to unvaccinated people. I am an example of this. And my infant son, who is five months, had COVID. And it was brought into our house.
Time.
That way. Thank you, sorry. I wish I could say more.
Anyone else in the chamber that wants to give comment? I'm going to go to the people on Zoom. Beth Scare?
Yep, hi. It's Beth Scare, 111 East Hobart Street. And I just, I wanted to tell Alderman Tebow that the mask ordinance does apply to age 2 and up. And I'm disappointed that he didn't read the ordinance before voting to extend it. I think it's just inhumane to do that to little kids and to the parents trying to care for them. And I just, also, hopefully the mayor's listening. One of the cases he cited for taking down my Save Women's Sport flag off the citizen flag pole was the case of Boston taking down or refusing to fly a Christian flag on City Hall Plaza. And I wanted to let him know that that case is in the Supreme Court and it's not looking good for Boston. And if Boston loses, I will likely be seeing him in court to get my Save Women's Sport flag back up there on the citizen flag pole. Thank you.
Sonia Prince?
Hi, Sonia Prince, 49 Tufts Drive. I just wanted to thank everybody on the board for listening to the health professionals, for listening to the science. A lot of Aldermen spoke to the most vulnerable who don't have a voice, the little ones, our seniors who may or may not be on Facebook. And on these big Facebook groups, often there are people who are not from Nashua. So it's not really a good sample. But yeah, the emails help, but very few people are active to send emails, which is unfortunate. 90,000 people, we should have more people, but same thing during municipal elections, a lot of people don't vote. It is what it is. But just to say that 50 emails do not represent the whole city. I appreciate you doing the right thing and looking out for the most vulnerable in our medical community. Thank you so much.
Chris Parks?
Hey, I'd like to thank especially some of the new Aldermen that got elected tonight, minus mine, for, you know, voting to end a mandate. I moved here from California. So I came to the live free or die state where I would be free to make my own choices. But apparently, you know, we can't do that. I'm really not even mad because I'm not going to comply or pay attention to it. You can't do anything to me and I really don't care. I would like to congratulate the ones, the nine or 10 that did vote to extend it, to continue to legislate yourself in insignificance. I will continue to shop in Nashville because I care about Nashville businesses. I care about the small businesses in our community. They don't have a choice, they fall under your, you know, little made-up rules. I just don't acknowledge your little, your mandate. There is one thing that I'd like, Ms. Cle asked a question about churches and private schools. Yeah, and I got it, they said no on churches, but they said that private schools do stand a chance of falling under it. My kids go to private school because of some of the things that have been enacted via the Board of Education and the Nashua Teachers Union. I pay for that. And if you think that you or any of y'all are going to try to comment and force something in a private school in Nashua, get ready for a fight. Because that's when you're going to see my indifference turn to anger. My entire family just had COVID like three weeks ago. The best we can figure out is that I got it from a double-vaxxed and boosted individual. So yeah, man, the vaccine's doing fantastic. So, you know, it was great. You know, I was really worried considering they had a fever for about six hours and I had a fever for about 12, really, really terrifying. So, you know, I just, I tell you, I congratulate the new Alderman. Thank you. You did a fantastic job tonight, minus mine. I don't know who you talked to in Ward 8, Tebow, but it's not anybody I know. So maybe you should expand your group. All right, thanks, have a great night. Bye.
Matthew Guthrie?
Thank you, Madam President. Matthew Guthrie, 104 Fonley. I wanted to thank you for allowing public comment for this mask ordinance. Although I'm disappointed with the outcome of this vote, it means a lot that you're finally listening to your constituents. It's a bad look when you legislate these items like you have in the past without zero public comment. You know, the one thing I heard repeated over and over again by our elected Aldermen tonight is why do we have a Board of Health if we don't listen to them? And I must say to that comment, as I and Lori Ortono and many others have said, that the Board of Health does not offer public input. And if our Board of Health doesn't listen to our residents and stakeholders, why do we even have a Board of Health? Thank you.
Justin Rosenberg?
Thank you, Madam President. Justin Rosenberg, 30 Kessler Farm Drive. I'd just like to say thank you for actually allowing public comment during this meeting. We should not have any other meetings where public comment is not allowed. And I hope this is the last instance that we have this issue. To the Aldermen that voted no in this ordinance, the citizens of Nashville and I, we thank you for your reasoned vote and we remember these things at the ballot box. Thank you.
Representative Linda Harry-Gatheright?
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to send condolences to Donna Graham and her family. I didn't get information, but hopefully, you know, we can send out information that we might be able to send cards or something of that nature. Because she was instrumental in my success within the Board of Aldermen. But I also want to thank the Board for their commitment today to continue with the with the mask ordinance. And for, so I'm happy about that vote. So until the next meeting, thank you.
Alicia Houston?
Thank you, Alicia Houston, 139 Westwood Drive. I've heard a lot of talk about the Board of Health and I appreciate the new Aldermen position of extending this mandate. It's unfortunate that the others have voted for it because it doesn't seem to me like you're actually listening to the total population. I did want to mention something that in November, I had actually sent a write-to-no request to Ms. Bagley, who is the Director of the Public Health System here in Nashua. And there was question one, does Nashua, New Hampshire isolate the SARS-CoV-2 virus from all other viruses in testing? Ms. Bagley responded, I quote, "In response to question one, Nashua Division of Health and Community Services does not isolate SARS-CoV-2 virus. We don't have lab capacity to do this type of work. Therefore, NVPHCS, any documentation that states we isolate, purify or improve systems SARS virus." End quote. So for those who have voted in favor with the Board of Health, I would like to remind you not just that Ms. Bagley has come across and literally said, we do not isolate the virus. You have another Board of Health member who's on vacation in a different country where it's been for two months. And you have another one who is a dentist.
Okay, that's, looks like it wraps up our public comment period. Remarks by members of the Board? I'll start over here. Alderman Tebow?
Yeah, I have a few. Yeah, and I appreciate that me and Alderman Kamel actually agreed on something. That's, that's a start, I guess. So, and I apologize to Ms. Scare. I know the mandate. I just, for some reason, thought it was five years and up. So thank you for clarifying that and that is all on me. And to clarify Facebook, I'm not against people doing informal polls. It's more that social media, sometimes you don't know if it's that person or like somebody said, you don't know where somebody lives. You don't know who's following that site and not site. So to me, it's just not as, the information is, just isn't as good as talking to people on the phone or seeing an email from someone you know or someone in your ward that you can verify. You know, one thing I wish is that the public comment for that public hearing was explained why. Because I don't think people understood, the citizens didn't understand why there ended up being no public comment last time where as opposed to this time, there is. And this is because this is a regular board meeting. There's two public comments, one for the agenda and one for anything they want to talk about. The other one was a public hearing, very different. And because there was a second reading right away, I believe, they went into voting. But I wish that was more explained to citizens that were outraged about no public comment. You know, I talked to a lot of people in Ward 8 and I'm sorry if Mr. Parks feels differently. I mean, he was a candidate prior. I knew exactly where he stood, so I didn't need to talk to him. I knew he was anti-mask. He said on many Facebook pages before, he was never going to wear one. So why would I need to talk to him about it? I knew his answer. I've spoken, like I said, I've spoken to a lot of Ward 8 people. My ward may be different than some of your wards here. And maybe it's we're closer to Massachusetts, I don't know. I can't explain that. Maybe the people that are talking to us are talking to us based on what our political party was. That could be the case too. I will speak to anyone, even Mr. Parks. And the last thing, I want to actually talk about something good because, you know, you know, people want to just be negative and, you know, on Sunday, my sons were watching ESPN and they were able to see one of the, the number one play of the week was from a Nashua South Unified Basketball player, Zach Ostrowski. And it was wonderful to see that as the number one. It was also wonderful to see my two sons going to the TV to put ESPN on instead of Nickelodeon and actually watch this kid steal the ball from Nashua North and make an incredible basket that made, again, the number one play on ESPN on the weekend. So jumping into the arms of kids that I've coached before from Nashua South when they were younger, it was fantastic. It was a great moment for Nashua to be recognized nationally. And a great thing for Zach. I think Unified Basketball is a great way for the city and the city sports to really do something good for kids that need something good. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Alderman Kathy?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. First, I'd like to also offer condolences to Donna and her family. And then I'd also like to offer condolences to, I just found out that there was a member of my ward who's a family member, came down with COVID just around Christmas and that family member has not returned home yet and has caused quite an amount of distress to the family. If that family wants to reach out to me, I'd love to talk to them. But I offer that family my condolences. Secondly, I'd also, in that vein, I learned that information from a member of my ward who called me out, rightfully so, for not attending a Finance Committee meeting because I did not want to wear a mask. Truth is, I didn't want to wear a mask. And I probably should have said protest. I wanted to protest the mask mandate or mask requirement in City Hall. I have come to change my position on that and will be attending all my meetings, if possible, in person because it gives me the best opportunity to represent my constituents and talk to other members of committees and boards and get that semi-face-to-face conversation going about whatever the businesses of the committee or the Board of Aldermen. So I apologize for not representing my ward and the city well in that manner. And to that member of my ward who emailed me, I thank him for bringing that to my attention. And moving forward, regardless of how I feel about the mask, and now after the vote, we know, I will be in attendance. And then thirdly, I'd like to mention, and this probably goes without saying, but since I'm new, I will say it anyway. I tend to probably come across, I'm going to say passionately, passionately, when I disagree with something or agree with something. And so I offer that it's not personal. And I respect everyone on the Board, but when I don't like something or I definitely do like something, I'm pretty extreme in that way, you'll probably know about it. But it's all, it's all respect in trying to get things done for the city. So I thank you.
Alderman Govea?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to thank everybody over the last couple of days in the week who have reached out about the mask mandate, either for it or against it. It was very important to make your voices heard and I do appreciate everybody's reached out to us. Secondly, I would like to thank the Nashville Police Department and its leadership for allowing me to do a ride-along last night in the city of Nashua. It was very informative and it's safe to say we're all in good hands here. So I do appreciate that. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd?
Two quick things. One, Thursday at the Joint Special School Building Committee at Nashua High North at 7:00 PM, we're going to be presenting to anyone from the Board of Aldermen, the Board of Education, that's not already on the Joint Special, an overview of the middle school project so you know how it started, where it is and where it's going. The other thing is, I've been on boards for over 40 years now. And the one thing that makes a board successful is agreeing to disagree. So when the meeting's over, whichever side you're on, don't hold any grudges against the other side, move on to the next topic. We vote for certain reasons, but it's not certainly in deference to any other Aldermen. So, thank you.
Alderman Kamel?
Thank you, Madam President. I would also like to offer my condolences to Donna and her family. And I would also like to offer my condolences to Alderman Moran. It's the first I've heard that you lost your father, so I'm sorry for that as well. I'm thankful to the members of the public that spoke tonight. I'm also thankful that it was, in general, a lot more orderly and respectful than some previous occasions. I think that we can get a lot more work done that way than the alternative. And I would also, I had one more thing and I forgot, so I apologize. I'll end it there.
Alderman Clemmons?
Thank you. I too want to give my condolences to Ms. Graham and her family. Also wanted to mention a constituent who passed away. Her name was Lucille Susi. And she lived in Nashua for a very long time. She was from Manchester. But her grandson is my best friend. And I always knew her as Memme. And she was a wonderful, kind, caring person. She lived to be 97 years old. And I just wanted to send my condolences out to the Susi and Pulawski family. And I hope that these troubled times will pass soon. Thank you.
Alderman Jettie?
I just wanted to acknowledge all of the emails that I too received about the mask issue. And I did, I did read them, I did consider them. But I hope that people understand that, you know, I feel that part of my responsibility as an Alderman is to protect the public health. And, you know, since this started, I know that we've received very conflicting information, you know, from all kinds of sources. And, you know, as I've said before, I'm incapable, I understand- I've said before, I'm, you know, incapable. I understand the legal issues, but I'm incapable of analyzing these medical issues. So I think it's my responsibility to turn to the people who I feel have the best expertise available to, to guide us in this very important issue. And those people are our Board of Health, who is charged by our charter and state law to protect the public health. And when our Board of Health says that, that wearing masks is part, is an important tool, among others, you know, wash your hands, keep your distance, get vaccinated, you know, get boosted. And wearing a mask, you know, is, is another tool that they feel, that they recommend is important in trying to deal with this, this virus, which, you know, you know, it's, it's no news. It's killed millions of people. So I hope people understand that, you know, I, I made the decision based upon what was recommended to us by the Board of Health, who have, you know, my greatest respect and appreciation. And I'm sure it is, I just can't imagine how they feel when, when they've analyzed this issue and looked at all of the studies and examined it to the extent that they have, to be dismissed by people who have, you know, seen something on, on the Internet or on, on some TV show. So, you know, you have my appreciation. Thank you for, for advising us. And thank you for coming. Thank you, Madam President.
Alderman Lopez?
Yep, I just wanted to announce, well, pass on to the public that the United Way is looking for volunteers to support some of the needs in hospitals and of healthcare workers. You can contact Sarah Caesar at the United Way if you're just in learning more. I wanted to express my condolences to Donna Graham and to her family for their recent loss. There have been a lot of aldermen and people in the community that have been experiencing tremendous loss, this holiday season particularly. So I just wanted to remind people, to quote the great American poet Tupac Shakur, "If you can make it through the night, there's a brighter day."
Alderman Moran?
Thank you, Madam President. I would just like to thank everyone who spoke tonight, whether we agree or not. I think it, again, reiterating my comments from earlier is very helping to have a dialogue of, and as you can see here, versus the last vote from the Board of Aldermen, a much different vote of representative government. I will say, I did think, I heard one speaker say something about the Public Health Department. I think I read something similar to that, and I don't know if Bobby Bally could correct, but I think you, public health doesn't test. So you can't actually break out that SARS information. I think that's the response. I just don't want that to be misconstrued as misinformation. We don't actually do the testing. That's hospitals and labs. And to wrap up, I did hear a lot of people talk about, you know, shopping elsewhere. I own and operate a small business. I have many people from Hudson, Merrimack, Mason, that come to me. They see the sign on the door. They respect the people in Nashua, and they put the mask on. I just want to reiterate that, that our neighbor, neighborhood communities respect us. We can respect ourselves. Thank you.
Alderman Clea?
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to send my condolences to Donna Graham and her, her family. I know a loss of any kind, but a parent is very difficult. I remember when I lost both my parents, I turned around and at 50 years old said to my husband, "I feel like I'm an orphan now." So it still takes its toll. I also want to thank everybody who spoke, regardless of what side you're on. I tell everybody, I learn more from those who don't agree with me than from those who agree with me. When we have a civil conversation, we can start to hear what the other side feels. I voted the way I voted because I voted with our Board of Health. They made this recommendation, and I trust them, and so on. I'd like to thank Alderman Como, your post that you put on Facebook, asking people to be for civility regardless of what side they were, that's wonderful. I think we all need to keep in mind, you people. So thank you for, for doing that. And to Alderman Cathy, you're going to learn that I'm very passionate, too. So I completely understand. And as most people here already know, I have a gift for Gab, and I do not shut up. So. And as far as a ride-along, Alderman, I wanted to thank Alderman Sullivan here. I too will be having, mine will be tomorrow. So I'm looking forward to it. And thank you, Madam President.
Anyone else? Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I too would like to be on record to offer condolences from the O'Brien family to Donna Graham and her family in this very difficult time of losing her father there. And that's basically it. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Board of Health for being here and for the work you've done over the last few years. It's not always been popular or easy, but do respect that you do the work and that you bring it to us, and that we are able to act on it. So thank you very much. And to the other members, if you'd pass that along, I'd appreciate it. I'd also like to thank Alderman Jettie for sending me a few email reminders this week of things that, you know, when you're busy, you know, a few things slip by. And one of them was about the group photo, and that it didn't make sense to do it tonight because everyone would be there with masks on. So thank you, Alderman Jettie, for that. I supported the mask ordinance for several reasons. One, because the Board of Health is, is our advisor, and I appreciate their advice. I also learned today that my 88-year-old mother has COVID. She's in a long-term care facility. She's been fully vaccinated, so keeping my fingers crossed on that one. Also, with masks, February's a short month, right? Well, lucky, it's the shortest, shortest month. So if that, if that's any consolation, which probably isn't, but I just thought I'd throw that out there. What else do I have? Well, I guess that's it. So, committee announcements. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. Wednesday, January 26th at 7:00 PM, here in the chamber, will be a meeting on the Committee of Infrastructure. Of course, everybody else is welcome. Just so everybody knows, barriers are not on the agenda. It'll be more of an organizational, anybody want to bring the tea and cake, feel free. Okay. And if you think you got off easy on infrastructure, how about another one? Joint Public Works and Infrastructure on Thursday, January 27th at 5:30. And I think that'll be over where the Public Works usually meets, upstairs at the auditorium. Okay, so that'll be at 5:30. Thank you.
Other committee announcements? No meetings?
Ours was taken by personnel administrative affairs.
Alderman Timmons?
Yes, Cultural Connection is meeting tomorrow morning at 9:00 AM. I will be there. And it's my first meeting with them, and I look forward to meeting with all those people. And anybody that want to be here by 9:00 AM, my colleagues, please just show up here at room 205 tomorrow. Learn something different.
You mean room 208? 208. Okay. Okay, non-public session. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion that the Board of Aldermen go into non-public session by roll call pursuant to RSA 91-8, semi-colon, 3, numeral 2, paragraph D, excuse me, D, consideration of the acquisition, sale, or lease of real or personal property, which, if discussed in public, would likely benefit a party or parties whose interests are adverse to those of the general community. And I would like that by roll call.
Okay, this requires a second. Would someone second that motion? Alderman Moran seconds that motion. Okay, so you requested a roll call. Would the clerk call the roll, please?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Clea?
Yes.
Alderman Moran?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons?
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Camo?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Gobia?
Yes.
Alderman Cathy?
Yes.
Alderman Tivo?
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Mosher?
Yes.
You have 15 As and zero As.
That motion carries, and we will be in non-public session.